Good evening. This twenty second meeting of the seventy third term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Members of the council, due to us being in virtual meeting setting, please note that I'll recognize you by saying you have the floor. Once recognized, please state your name and begin to speak. In lieu of invocation, I ask everyone to bow their heads for a moment of quiet reflection. Thank you. At this time, we'll now state the pledge of allegiance. Please turn to a flag or put one on your computer screen and state the pledge of allegiance. At this point, I'll ask the clerk to call the rule. Madam Clerk, you are on mute. You're still on mute, Madam Clerk. We can see you, but we can't hear you, Madam Clerk. Still no. Yeah. While we work out the technical details with the clerk, we have a sub in.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, ahead and call the roll, President Mosby, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Mr. President, we do have a quorum.
Thank you for that. Now we're gonna see, Madam Clerk, were you able to straighten out your technical difficulties?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you loud and clear. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal. Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, the Journal of the November twenty first, twenty twenty one proceedings are on the council member's desk.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing and seeing them, the journal is now adopted. Thank you. I just received word that the Charm City TV livestream is down. People are still able to see it via social media, but the Charm City live TV stream is down. Communications from the mayor can be found on page two of the agenda. I'm hopeful that sometime before our next meeting, we'll hear from the mayor regarding Council Bill twenty one dash one two one. That's our ARPA Funding Oversight Bill. As you may recall, we passed this legislation unanimously on November the first meeting. And I've reached out to the mayor several times and his team to reiterate the importance of the dispergent priority of the council. Before we move on with our agenda, we have a bit of procedural business that I would like to ask members assistance with. Our city council rules require that bills be submitted to the HOPRA by noon on the third working day before introduction. With the Veterans Day holiday last week, the HOPRA deadline should have been Tuesday and not Wednesday. So at this point, I would ask for a motion to invoke Rule nine dash one to permit the late introduction of EA twenty one zero zero six seven through EA twenty one zero zero seven zero. So this city council bills twenty one dash one seven two through twenty one dash one eight one and city council resolutions twenty one dash seven eight R through twenty one dash eighty two R. At this point, I entertain a motion.
So move.
Second, Councilman Stokes.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor permitting the introduction, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the motions carry. We'll now proceed to executive nominations. Madam Clerk, if you could read in the first nomination.
EA twenty one dash zero zero six seven, Thomas Akris, Member Board of Licensing for Towing Services.
The nomination has been assigned to the Rules and Oversight Committee. Next nomination.
EA twenty one dash zero zero six eight, Jason Bagu, Member Mayor's Commission on Disabilities.
That nomination has been assigned to the Rules and Oversight Committee.
EA twenty one dash zero zero six nine, Gary Crum, Member of Commission on Sustainability.
That nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee.
EA twenty one dash zero zero seven zero, Yolanda G. Winkler, Member Commission on Sustainability.
And that nomination has been assigned to Rules and Oversight Committee. And now we're gonna move to bills to be introduced for first reading. Madam Clerk, if you could read the first bill.
City Council Bill twenty one dash zero one seven two, Baltimore City Legacy Residents Urban Homesteading Program. For the purpose of revitalizing Baltimore's neighborhoods by reviving the Baltimore City Urban Homesteading Program for Legacy Residents, establishing the program, specifying criteria for program participants, creating program procedures, defining certain terms, and generally related to the Baltimore City Urban Homesteading Program. Sponsors are President Mosby, Vice President Middleton, Councilmember Stokes, McCray, Conway, Schleifer, Costello, and Glover.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This bill is the cornerstone of our House Baltimore package, which was designed to responsibly as well as sustainably grow our city and stabilize our communities. In short, we're bringing back the Dollar House program, but revamping it to target legacy residents as well as city employees living in historically disadvantaged, disinvested communities. These are the folks who've been holding those neighborhoods and our communities up for far too long with disproportionate amount of this investment in their communities. This will allow them to hold on to homes and get access to homes that they can afford while building generational wealth for years to come. They've been shut out of these opportunities previously, and this program allows them access. We know there's an interest in the approach, and there's a need definitely for it. I've reached out to the administration to ask that they consider investing the ARPA funds into housing and homeownership and revitalizing the communities that have been disproportionately impacted for far too long. I'd like to thank all of the co-sponsors of this particular legislation. This bill has been assigned to committee as a whole. Madam Clerk, the next bill.
City Council.
President.
Can you add me, please? I forgot to add myself on there, sorry.
Ma'am, if we could please note that Councilwoman Odette Ramos would like to be added to this bill. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill twenty one dash zero one seven three, Baltimore City Home Repairs Grant Program. For the purpose of establishing the Baltimore City Home Repairs Grant Program, specifying the purpose of the program, establishing eligibility criteria for the program, specifying the assistance provided by the program, defining certain terms, and generally relating to the Baltimore City Home Repairs Grant Program. Sponsors are Councilmember Bullock, President Mosby, Councilmember Middleton, Stokes, McCray, Conway, Schleifer, Costello, and Glover.
And for the record, I'm sorry, I think we miss you, Councilwoman Bullock. For twenty one dash zero one seven two, Councilwoman Bullock is also a sponsor. At this point, for twenty one dash zero one seven three, I'd like to turn the floor over to Councilwoman Bullock. Floor is yours.
Oh, so yeah, so thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, our members of the council and also our co-sponsors. Again, as many of us know, in our districts, home repairs could be quite expensive, and I think it makes sense for us to really put out the resources for our homeowners to have that access to funds to improve their properties. This is something that I think we've all gotten complaints about, whether we're talking about emergency repairs, a roof, or even some of our seniors who want to retrofit a home to make it more accessible. So again, I think it's something that's really timely, and I appreciate the support from our colleagues. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bullock. Madam Clerk, that bill has also been assigned to committee as a whole. Madam Clerk, if you could go to twenty one dash zero one seven four.
City Council Bill twenty one dash zero one seven four, Baltimore City Senior Homeowners Grant Program. For the purpose of establishing the Baltimore City Senior Homeowners Grant Program, specifying the purpose of the program, establishing eligibility criteria for the program, specifying the assistance provided by the program, defining certain terms, and generally relating to the Baltimore City Senior Homeowners Grant Program. Sponsors are Vice President Middleton, President Mosby, Councilmember Stokes, McCray, Conway, Schleifer, Costello, and Glover.
Madam Vice President, the floor is yours. She's having technical issues as well. This bill goes in conjunction with the previous bill, but specifically speaks to seniors as it relates to the predatory industry of reverse mortgaging, targeting certain communities that sometimes puts our seniors at a huge disadvantage of potentially losing their home. So this provides a pot of money where if they find themselves in a situation, this would help them, be it with taxes, be it with some other type of repair or fee associated with ensuring that they stay in their home. The only other addition that we have is twenty one dash zero one seven four. Before we move on, sorry. Madam Vice President, would you like to speak to one seven four?
That was the one for seniors. Sorry, I was knocked off and I had to reboot and start all over again.
Not a problem.
Um, I just wanna say that I'm hopeful and excited about the whole package that you have submitted, and more particularly this bill that. I've said either.
The internet in the Northwest is not working properly today. Well, I explained the bill. I know that the Madam Vice President would have done a better job than what I did, but I explain, I think we all understand. We can move forward. This bill has been assigned to committee as a whole. I know that Councilman Bullock, you would like to sign onto this as well, correct? Yeah. Oh, and Councilwoman Ramos. So if you could please note that for the record. Before we move on, I wanted to speak a little more about our House Baltimore package. These bills build on the House America pledge that the council unanimously adopted several months ago. They represent months of work by members of the council and members of my staff. We've engaged economic policy experts, housing experts, our colleagues in cities like Philadelphia and Detroit, our federal partners, and people doing on-the-ground work to build up.
You're breaking up, Mr. President.
What do you say? Madam Vice President, we know that we like to keep cameras on, but maybe you should just try to turn those on, just off, to see if we can save some bandwidth. But your, your service keeps going in and out.
Oh, okay. And I, look, I was hearing you in and out as well. So are we still on the bill for seniors?
We have moved past the bill for seniors, Madam Vice President.
You were on the roll.
We're on the roll. But, so I think we're okay. I think I covered it clearly. I didn't do as good of a job that you would have done, but I think we're, we're on the roll.
Okay.
But you're, you're also throwing off my script. I'm supposed to, I wrote, I took my hard sweat and tears to write this out, and you keep, you keep throwing me off.
I am so sorry.
It's all.
So where are we on the agenda since I keep?
We are, we are right past your senior bill.
Okay.
But the council as well as the general public beg you not to turn back on your camera, at least not for this meeting.
It, it will stay off.
Well, that's it. So no, we're excited about these bills. You know, I think it's a very strong package. We did it as committee as a whole because we thought that this takes an all handle, all hands on deck approach. The council has constantly talked about this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. We want to see transformational results come out of it. I think that we spoke resoundingly when we all came together to talk about the oversight. And now this is the one option that we would like to present to the administration to really go after what we see as core issues in our communities. I don't care if you are in northeast, southeast, southwest, northwest. These, all these issues are prevalent in certain parts of our districts, if not all of our districts. And that's why we thought that once in its lifetime opportunity, not only can we provide opportunities for folks that have been living with the crime, the grime, the blight, but providing them access to potentially becoming homeowners and developing generational wealth where we know our city is headed to. So excited for the legacy renters as well as for the city employees that many of these programs were built off of. With that, Madam Clerk, if you could turn to twenty one dash zero one seven five.
City Council Bill twenty one dash zero one seven five, Zero Waste Commission. For the purpose of establishing the Zero Waste Commission, providing for the commission's composition, terms of office, officers, meetings, quorum, and rules of procedure, establishing the general purposes and specific duties of the Zero Waste Commission, defining certain terms, and generally relating to the Zero Waste Commission. Sponsors are Councilmember Conway, Porter, and Middleton.
At this point, I'd like to turn the floor over. I saw the hand of Councilman Bullock as well as Councilwoman Ramos. At this point, I'd like to turn the floor over to Chairman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I also wanna thank Councilwoman Porter as well for, for working with me to help draft this bill. This bill, of course, drafts or creates a zero-waste commission, realizing the great need and responsibility of our city to manage waste in the city. And also the challenge that we have with no longer being reliant, relying on, on Bresco to incinerate our trash. It has impacts on health, it has impacts on our hair, and so we need to really begin to make a move towards zero waste. And this is the first step in that endeavor. This commission will draft a plan in the first year, and then thereafter, hold us accountable to getting towards zero waste in the future. So appreciate the co-sponsors, really appreciate Councilwoman Porter for her support on this and helping us get it to the finish line. I look forward to the discussion and getting across the finish line when all said and done. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. This bill has been assigned to Health, Environment, and Technology Committee. At this point, Madam Clerk, if you could read in twenty one dash zero one seven six.
Mr. President, may I just do a quick comment on this?
No, no, Madam Vice President, we're cutting your camera and now your microphone off. No, of course, Madam Vice President, you have the floor.
I just wanna thank Councilman Conway and Councilwoman Porter for working on this bill. Because I just wanted to share that last week, I had an opportunity. Because of the National Committee Advisory Board that I serve on, we had our first in-person meeting last week in West Palm Beach, Florida. And we visited the recycling plant in West Palm Beach, which has very high ratings and very, you know, on point with moving waste to energy and all of their recycling efforts. And it, this facility played a key role in the reduction of the greenhouse gases, and they have studies. So I encourage you to kind of look at the work that's going on there. This is just right on target with, with what I think we're trying to at least halfway reach in, in, in our city. Thank you.
No, thank you, Madam Vice President. At this point, we're gonna turn to Council Bill twenty one dash zero one seven six. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill twenty one dash zero one seven six, zoning review alcoholic beverages. For the purpose of requiring the Department of Planning to conduct a certain review following the closure or sale of certain businesses and generally relating to the zoning designation review of businesses that sell alcoholic beverages. Sponsors are Councilmember Burnett, Dorsey, Cohen, Bullock, Middleton, and Porter.
Councilwoman Burnett, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues, and I'm near Northwest, so is my, am I coming through?
Yeah, you come through. Normally, you're our problem child, but you're good today.
I know, and it's real windy right now, so I just wanna make sure before I'm talking to myself for five minutes. So this is trying to build on the work that was done through Transform Baltimore. If enacted, it would trigger a reevaluation of the zoning use of liquor stores. If there's a sale or closure or a transfer of the license, to do a reassessment of the public health impact and safety of that particular location to continue to operate in that, in that manner. I look forward to a good discussion in committee on this and appreciate the support. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Councilman. Are there any additional co-sponsors? I see the hand of Councilwoman Ramos. If you could please note that Councilwoman Ramos would like to sign onto this bill. This bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development Committee. Madam Clerk, twenty one dash.
It's Councilman Torrance. I'm having the same issue.
The same issue. Do you wanna sign onto that, Councilman Torrance?
Yeah, I tried to do it for the others, raise what they raise hands function, but I was sending a message to Ms. Austin.
Okay, cool. Thank you so much. And I'll ask you going forward. So please note that Councilwoman Ramos and Councilman Torrance would like to be added to this bill. Madam Clerk, twenty one dash zero one seven seven.
City Council Bill twenty one dash zero one seven seven, Renters' Property Tax Relief Supplement. For the purpose of establishing a renters' property tax relief supplement, requiring the Department of Finance to adopt the rules and regulations and generally relating to the renters' property tax relief supplement. Sponsors are Councilmember Burnett, Dorsey, Cohen, Middleton, and Porter.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to turn the floor back over to Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. So this would, if enacted, would provide a fifty percent supplement to eligible renters who are already receiving the state property tax relief supplement for renters, which was established at the, with the Maryland General Assembly. This was an action taken by our neighbors in Montgomery County to provide additional support for renters and could be an impactful step for the citizens of Baltimore. So again, looking, looking forward to discussing it further in committee.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. At this point, are there any additional co-sponsors? I see Councilwoman Ramos.
Also me, Councilman Torrance.
And Councilman Torrance as well. Please note that Councilwoman Ramos and Councilman Torrance would like to sign on twenty one dash zero one seven seven. This bill has been assigned to the Ways and Means Committee. Onto twenty one dash zero one seven eight, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill twenty one dash zero one seven eight, Tax Credit Historic Properties Definition of Historic Property. For the purpose of expanding the definition of historic property in city code, Article twenty eight, Section ten eight. Sponsors are Councilmember Bullock and Middleton.
Councilman Bullock, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, as most of you know, I've been the CHAP representative, Commissioner for Historical and Architectural Preservation, the representative for the council on CHAP both in the last term and this current term. And so as a member of CHAP, one of the things that we see is that folks have been able to access this tax credit in areas that are designated historic districts, whether it be on the national or local level. However, and from a purpose of equity, it might make a lot of sense to actually extend that definition to properties that are over fifty years old. And so that will allow other people who are making investments in their properties to take advantage of the tax credit, even if they're outside of a designated historic district. As I, as I mentioned before, I think it's a good move in terms of equity, but also we wanna encourage folks to take advantage of this opportunity in some of the areas that are not currently utilizing it. So I think it'd be great, and hopefully you can get your support on this. Thank you so much.
No, thank you, Councilman Bullock. At this point, are there any additional co-sponsors? Hearing, I see Councilman Burnett. I see Councilman Cohen. Is that it?
Torrance as well.
Please note that Burnett, Cohen, and Torrance would like to be added as co-sponsors. This bill has been assigned to Ways and Means Committee. Onto twenty one dash zero one seven nine.
City Council Bill twenty one dash zero one seven nine, City Property Naming a Skate Park in the Joseph H. Rasch Playfield to be Jake's Skate Park. For the purpose of naming a portion of the Joseph H. Rasch Playfield to be located at the coordinates of thirty nine, two, eight, one, three, eight, seven, seven, six, point, six, one, zero, nine, four, four, Jake's Skate Park. Sponsor is Councilmember Costello.
Chairman Costello, at this point, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm proposing to rename the recently constructed skate park at Rasch Field in the memory of Jake Owen. Jake is a constituent who tragically lost his life at the age of five due to a distracted driver. After that horrible incident, his family and, and his community came together to help raise money for one of the things that Jake loved, which was skateboarding, to help raise funds to construct this new skate park in the Inner Harbor. That's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Chairman Costello. Are there any additional co-sponsors for this piece of legislation? Hearing and seeing none, this bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development. Onto twenty one dash zero one eight zero, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill twenty one dash zero one eight zero, Rezoning to five, two, five, Insulator Drive. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as two, five, two, five, Insulator Drive as outlined in red on the accompanying plaque, from the I two zoning district to the PC three zoning district, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor is Councilmember Costello.
This bill is in assigned to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Onto twenty one dash zero one eight one, Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill twenty one dash zero one eight one, City Property Renaming Tench Teeman Elementary Middle School to Beatrice B. Gaddy Elementary Middle School. For the purpose of changing the name of Tench Teeman Elementary Middle School located at six hundred North Patterson Park Avenue to Beatrice B. Gaddy Elementary Middle School. Sponsors are Glover, Stokes, and Bullock.
Note to typo in the publish agenda list, Stokes is the lead sponsor, he's a co-sponsor. Councilmember Glover is the lead sponsor. Councilmember Glover, the floor is yours. Councilmember Glover, the floor is yours if you would like to speak. Technical issues all over the place tonight. This bill has been assigned to Economic and Community Development Committee. While we have you, I know that Chairman Stokes is intimately involved in this as well. Chairman Stokes, would you like to speak on behalf of this?
President. There you go. Thank you. Can you guys hear me?
No, your, your signal was pretty bad, Councilman Glover. We're gonna have Chairman Stokes speak on behalf.
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, Chairman Stokes, if you could speak.
Okay, real quick, we, I don't have to explain what Miss Beatrice B. Gaddy did in Baltimore City. She took out hard-earned money and started feeding home, not just homeless people, just people that work every day who never had the luxury that we have, that we can go in the refrigerator or go to restaurants and eat. So I thought it was only at the request of her daughter, Cynthia Brooks, that we named Tench Teeman Beatrice B. Gaddy Elementary School because her office, which she first started, is actually right around the corner from the school itself. So I look forward to a real hearing with her daughter and members that she really helped and people who still now go to the B. Gaddys location on Chester Street where they volunteer. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. This bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development. At this point, we're gonna turn it over to resolutions to be introduced for first reading. Madam Clerk, if you could read the first resolution, twenty one dash zero zero seven eight R.
City Council Resolution twenty one dash zero zero seven eight R, Investigative Hearing Baltimore Police Department Disciplinaring and Complaint Process. For the purpose of requesting that the Baltimore City Police Commissioner appear before the city council to brief it regarding the Baltimore City Police Department's current process to file and investigate a complaint of misconduct against a Baltimore City police officer. The current disciplinary process followed if this officer is found guilty of misconduct and any current efforts to improve or overhaul the disciplinary and complaint process in the Baltimore City Police Department. Sponsors are Councilmember Burnett, Dorsey, Cohen, Bullock, and Porter.
At this point, I'd like to yield the floor to Councilwoman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. So in lieu of both conversations that I've had with Baltimore born and raised, police officers, African-American police officers, there's some concerns that have been brought to my attention about the disciplinary process within the police department. In addition, I think it's important that we, as a council, discuss some of the upcoming changes that have been passed by the General Assembly on this particular issue. And so it's the reason for the introduction, looking forward to the really good conversation in the committee on this, this resolution and on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional co-sponsors? Hearing and seeing none, this bill has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations Committee. Onto twenty one dash zero zero seven nine R, Madam Clerk.
City Council Resolution twenty one dash zero zero seven nine R, Informational Hearing Mold in Housing. For the purpose of inviting the Commissioner of the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Executive Director of the Housing Authority of Baltimore City, the Health Commissioner, and the Secretary of the Maryland Department of Health, or his designee to appear before the city council to discuss the potential dangers of mold in housing. Sponsors are Councilmember Burnett, Dorsey, Cohen, Bullock, Middleton, and Porter.
At this point, I yield the floor to you, Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is, again, a critical issue impacting Baltimore city residents, both renters and homeowners. There was a twenty fifteen study of three hundred renter households facing eviction, and the Public Justice Center, it's a local nonprofit that you're all familiar with, found that nearly three quarters of these renters had complained about. found that nearly three quarters of these renters had complained about severe housing defects to their landlords that were then sued for non-payment of rent despite the landlord's failure to repair. And in that study, mold ranked fourth among all of the defects superseded by, you know, infestations of insects and rodents, peeling and flicking, peeling and flicking paint and leaks. And mold was the only one that is omitted in the Baltimore City Property Maintenance Code. And so we need a more proactive approach to protect renters and homeowners in our city that are chronically and negatively impacted by these unacceptable conditions. Looking forward again to discussing further in committee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for your leadership on this issue, Councilman Burnett. At this point, are there any additional co-sponsors? I see a hand raised of Councilwoman Ramos. This bill has been assigned to Health, Environment, and Technology Committee, Madam Clerk, on to twenty-one dash zero zero eight zero R.
City Council Resolution Twenty-one dash zero zero eight zero R, Informational Hearing Shot Spotter Program. For the purpose of requesting an informational hearing with the Baltimore Police Department and the Department of Finance regarding the Shot Spotter Program. Sponsors are Councilmembers Stokes, Bullock, and Porter.
At this point, I would like to yield the floor to Chairman Stokes. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is just a formal hearing on updating the spot shotter but getting a better understanding, not just for the council, but for the Baltimore city residents to understand exactly what the spot shot is supposed to do, because there's a lot of misinformation out there. Having this hearing, having our community listen to see exactly what it's designed to do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Is it spot shotter or shot spotter?
Shot spotter. You know what it is.
Little bit of a tongue twister. Yep, shot spotter. Thank you, Chairman Stokes. At this point, are there any additional co-sponsors? Hearing and seeing none, this bill has been assigned to Public Safety and Government Operations Committee on to twenty-one dash zero zero eight one R, Madam Clerk.
City Council Resolution Twenty-one dash zero zero eight one R, Codemap and Decision Making. For the purpose of inviting the Director of the Department of Housing and Community Development to explain to the city council how the codemap application and the data sets the application uses assists public and private decision-making and strategic planning in the city and helps move the city forward. Sponsors are Vice President Middleton, Councilmembers Bullock, and Porter.
At this point, I would like to turn the floor over to Madam Vice President Middleton for words on this bill.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, this resolution is basically a friendly learning session, especially for new members on the council and anyone that's interested in understanding code mapping and the decision-making process using this mapping. And I just wanted to mention that I remember in the last term, my colleague Councilman Bullock started introducing conversion, the conversion process for housing, changing housing policies and regulations within his district, which he definitely needed to push that ball in trying to get equitable things happening within disenfranchised areas of his district. And I, I think this is a very good place to start for reviewing the data sets now being used for strategic economic and community planning and decision-making for neighborhoods in Baltimore. And those data sets are for, sorry for that barking, those data sets are for impact investment areas, major redevelopment areas, community development zones, land activity and transaction, master plans, opportunity zones, art districts, which we are all involved in all of that. And all of this list of data sets are very important because they help guide all of that decision-making and strategic planning in Baltimore. So it's time to take a deeper look at the data and processes. Codemap is a good tool and a good starting point. And I'm gonna have the Planning Department and Housing kind of working together to educate us more on how to use that. And also just quickly wanted to mention that in the most recent Planning Department's newsletter, there is reference made to a link, a link about racism in Louisville's Planning Department. And that, that report can be used as a strong reference for reviewing past planning policies which contribute to racist land use policies in Baltimore and across the country. So if anyone, if you get a chance, I think that's a really good read. I have read some of it, but plan to use that also in some of our discussions. So I hope you all can sign on. I think this is a very good beginning and really digging in deeply with the equity problems that we continue to have in our city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Are there any additional co-sponsors? I see Councilman Cohen with his hand raised. Hearing and seeing no others, this bill has been assigned to Economic Community Development Committee. That, we're gonna go to the last resolution of the night, Madam Clerk. That's twenty-one dash zero zero eight two R.
City Council Resolution Twenty-one dash zero zero eight two R, Investigative Hearing What is the State of Stat? For the purpose of requesting that the city administrator, the deputy city administrator, each of the deputy mayors, the chief data officer, the director of the Office of Performance and Innovation, the director of the Baltimore City Office of Information Technology, and the heads of data-driven strategies and performance management from each city agency come before the city council to discuss the current state of data collection, evaluation, and how we are using the tenants of city stat to address internal process issues to help close service delivery gaps. Sponsors are Chair Conway, Councilmembers Bullock, Middleton, and Porter.
At this point, I'd like to yield the floor to Chairman Conway. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. As, as you all know, as a former alumni of the city staff program, it's an issue that I've always got an eye on. It's a world-class program founded here in Baltimore City and emulated literally all over the world. We were the first to do it and, and dare I say, the best to do it. But I, I know with, with time, we've seen some transition, both in the staff program and of course, leadership for the city. But that doesn't at all change how important the city staff program is to service delivery and making sure that we deliver the highest quality of government services. So this investigative hearing is geared toward identifying where we are with stat and, and really looking into what we're working on, how we're using data analytics, mapping, and otherwise to make sure that we're delivering the very highest level of service to Baltimore's residents. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let the record reflect that I should be listed on as a co-sponsor. So if you could please list me on as a co-sponsor. At this point, are there any additional co-sponsors? I see the hand raised of Councilwoman Ramos, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Cohen.
Please add me on, Mr. President.
Madam Vice President Middleton. I believe. Got you. Got you. Got you, got you, Councilman Glover. Did I hear Councilman Torrance? I don't think so. Okay. If you could please add on Council Vice President Middleton, Councilman Glover, Councilman Cohen, Councilwoman Ramos, and Councilmember Burnett. This bill has been assigned to Health, Environment, and Technology Committee. You can find the consent calendar on Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the calendar is now approved. We will now move to bills on second reader. At this point, I would like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
There's a motion on the floor that we go to short titles for the duration of the meeting. Unless there's any unreadiness, questions, or concerns, we are going to go to short titles for the remainder of the meeting. Hearing and seeing none, we are in short titles. We're gonna go to Economic Community Development at first. Madam Clerk, if you could read in Council Bill Twenty-one dash zero zero eight three.
Council Bill Twenty-one dash zero zero eight three, Franchise Gas Regulator Station Utility at Lower Glens Falls Park.
At this point, I would like to recognize Vice President of the Council and Chair of the Committee, Sharon Green Middleton. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm trying to find, hold on, hold on a second, please.
Remember, this is the bill that was held because it had to go through the Board of Estimates before we could move it on the council.
Oh, okay.
This is that BGNE regulator bill.
Okay, I'd like to go ahead and move this bill. This was the one that we held up, so I just wanna go ahead and move it to third reader.
Yep, just move it favorably.
And it moved favorably to third reader.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of moving this bill forward, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Did I hear aye? Nope. All ayes, all right. I think it was a delay. This bill has been approved and will be printed for a third reading. On to twenty-one dash zero one zero nine, Madam Clerk.
Council Bill Twenty-one dash zero one zero nine, City Property Renaming Calverton Elementary Middle School to Catherine Johnson Global Academy.
At this point, I'd like to yield the floor to Madam Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this bill was heard on November ninth, twenty twenty-one. The committee approved a technical amendment to correct the address. The amendment should be, the amendment should be in council members' files. I move the amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Moving the committee minutes, amendments, sorry, have moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of adopting committee amendments, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendments are adopted. Madam Vice President, the floor is yours.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
Is a motion on the floor to move the bill favorable as amended? Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving the bill, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, this bill is approved, approved as amended. Now we're gonna move to Health and Environment and Technology. Madam Clerk, if you could please read in Resolution Twenty-one dash zero zero seven zero R.
Council Resolution Twenty-one dash zero zero seven zero R, Informational Hearing Soil Conservation in Baltimore City.
At this point, I'd like to yield the floor to Chairwoman McCray. Chairwoman McCray, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Health, Environment, and Technology Committee held a hearing on the resolution last Wednesday, November the tenth. I move the resolution favorable.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of adopting a resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the resolution is now adopted. Thank you, Madam Chair. On to Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, if you could read in Council Bill Twenty-one dash zero one five four.
Council Bill Twenty-one dash zero one five four, Sale of Property, one-two-zero-one, North Rosedale Street.
At this point, I'd like to recognize the Chair of the Committee, Chairman Costello. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of moving this bill forward, please say aye.
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 And all those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the bill is approved for third reading. On to twenty-one dash zero one six seven, Madam Clerk.
Council Bill Twenty-one dash zero one six seven, High Performance Market Rate Rental Housing Tax Credit Citywide Application Extension.
I yield the floor to the Chair of the Committee, Chairman Costello. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are amendments in my colleague's inbox. I move the amendments.
Would you like to speak to the merit of any of the amendments, Mr. Chair, or no?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. The amendment for this bill amends a second date that exists within the bill. So the bill itself extended the application deadline by a period of five years. But the legislation would be rendered useless without changing the date for which a use and occupancy permit is required in order to be eligible for the credit by the same period of five years. That's what this amendment does. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. There's been a motion on the floor to move this amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion on the floor that's been properly seconded to move the committee amendments along. At this point, all those in favor of adopting committee amendments, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it, the amendments are adopted. Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to move the bill favorable as amended. All those in favor, please, of approving this bill, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Please note that there is one nay. I believe that was from Councilmember Dorsey. I have one nay from Councilmember Dorsey. Everyone else is in favor. This bill is approved as amended. On to twenty-one dash zero one six eight, Madam Clerk.
Council Bill Twenty-one dash zero one six eight, Tax Credits Historic Properties Application Extension.
At this point, I'd like to yield the floor to the Chair of the Committee, Chairman Costello. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably.
Is there a second?
Second.
This has been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, all those in favor of moving and approving this bill forward, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, this bill is approved for third reading. Please note that Councilmember Dorsey is a nay. Everyone else is aye. Correct? Yep. Councilmember Dorsey is a nay. Again, this bill has been approved for third reading. On to twenty-one dash zero one six nine, Madam Clerk.
Council Bill Twenty-one dash zero one six nine, High Performance Newly Constructed Dwellings Tax Credit Application Extension.
At this point, I'd like to yield the floor to the Chair of the Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's an amendment. I move the amendment, the committee amendment, and this amendment extends this credit from a period of two years to five years. Thank you, Mr. President.
There's a motion on the floor to accept the committee amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All those in favor of adopting committee amendments, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Are there any nays? The ayes have it, this bill is amended. Mr. Clerk, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I give the floor back to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably as amended.
There's a motion on the floor to move the bill favorable as amended, and it's been properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And all those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Please note that there is one nay. This, and Councilman Dorsey, this bill has been approved as amended. On to, next, we turn to third reading for final passage. Clerk, if you could please read the bills as well as call and roll. The first bill up is twenty-one dash zero zero nine one.
Twenty-one dash zero zero nine one, Sale of Property, Block six-nine-nine-seven, Lot zero-zero-two. President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. On to twenty-one dash zero zero nine five, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one dash zero zero nine five, Labor Trafficking Notice Requirements. President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. On to twenty-one dash zero zero nine eight, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one dash zero zero nine eight, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Five Dwelling Units in the R-eight Zoning District Variance is one-one-zero-zero West Lafayette Avenue. President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos. Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. On to twenty-one dash zero one zero eight, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one dash zero one zero eight. City Property renaming James Mojer Elementary to Billy Holiday Elementary School. President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. On to twenty-one dash zero one one, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one dash zero one-one-one. Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Three Dwelling Units in the R-seven zoning district, Variance twenty-three-one-two, Lot Place. President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. On to twenty-one dash zero one one six, Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one dash zero one one six. Rezoning, Block three-five-one-eight-eight, Lot zero-zero-one. President Mosby, Councilmember Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Porter, Costello, Stokes, Glover, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Moving on, members, the clearing of bill status, that list can be found on Page ten of the agenda. If you see an ordinance or resolution on the list that you would like to keep active in committee, please notify Natwana Austin before December the ninth. That's December the ninth. Note, the list will be published again in the December sixth as well as December ninth meeting agendas. Chairs, at this time, we're going to go to committee announcements. Please proceed with your committee. First up, we're going to go to Madam Vice President and Chair of Economic Community Development, Sharon Green Middleton. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Economic and Community Development Committee will hold the following public hearings virtually on Webex on December fourteenth, 2021, at two-ten P.M. Bill number twenty-one dash zero zero six eight R. An informational hearing naming city properties sponsor Middleton. On January eleventh, 2022, at two P.M. We'll hear City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero six five R. Investigative hearing vacant residential properties requirement for homeowner insurance sponsor Burnett. And also, on January eleventh, 2022, at two-oh-five P.M. We'll hear City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero zero two eight R. It's basically a work session from the bill, that bill we're going to hear on tomorrow. It's an informational hearing Baltimore's plan for our neighborhoods experiencing homelessness and residing in hotels during the pandemic sponsor Ramos. Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. At this point, we're going to go to Education, Workforce, and Youth. Chair Stokes, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee hold a hearing on Thursday, December sixteenth, 2021, beginning at five P.M. Council Resolution twenty-one dash zero zero five-six R. A formal hearing from front door to schoolhouse door at the request of Councilwoman Raymones. The hearing will be televised on Charm TV twenty-five. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. On to Health, Environment, and Technology. Madam Chair McCray, the floor is yours.
No announcements. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next up is Public Safety Government Operations. Mr. Chair Conway, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, December eighth, 2021, to hear Bill twenty-one dash zero zero four-one R. Informational hearing, Domestic Violence in Baltimore City. It'll be at one P.M. virtually, and it's sponsored by myself, Councilman Conway. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next up, we're going to go to Rules and Legislative Oversight. Chairman Yitzhak Slipher, the floor is yours.
Hey, Mr. President. The Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee will hold a hearing on EA twenty-one dash zero zero six seven on December second at two P.M. for Thomas Ehrkas, member of the Board of License, Licensing for Towing Services. And the committee will also hold a hearing on EA twenty-one dash zero zero six nine, also on December second at two-oh-two P.M. on Gary Crumb, member of the Commission on Sustainability. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Chairman Schleifer. And then last but certainly not least, Chairman Costello of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Biennial Audits Oversight Commission will hold its final meeting of the year on Monday, December thirteenth at five P.M. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Chairman Costello. And then we have committee as a whole, we will meet virtually on Monday, November the twenty-second, 2021, at five P.M. to hear LO twenty-one dash zero zero one six, Pursuing Equity in City Contracts, MWB O-O Management. This hearing was originally scheduled to take place on November the eighth. Members, I move to waive rules ten dash two and ten dash three to announce a hearing. Is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, we will proceed with the rules suspended. The committee as a whole will also meet virtually on Monday, December the twentieth, 2021, at five P.M. to hear City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero one seven-two, Baltimore City Legacy Residence Urban Homesteading Program. I would like to also move to waive rules ten dash two and ten dash three to announce another hearing. Is there any objections? Hearing and seeing no objections, we will proceed with the rules suspended. The committee as a whole will also meet virtually on Monday, December the twentieth, 2021, at five-oh-one P.M. to hear City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero one seven-three, Baltimore City Home Repairs Grant Program. Finally, I would like to waive rules ten dash two and ten dash three again to announce another hearing. Is there any objections at this point? Hearing and seeing none without objections, we will proceed with the rules suspended. The committee as a whole will meet virtually on Monday, December the twentieth, 2021, at five-oh-two to hear City Council Bill twenty-one dash zero one seven-four, Baltimore City Senior Homeowners Grant Program. Now we will go to regular announcements. Are there any regular announcements from members? We always know that Councilwoman Ramos is going to come with her regular announcement. I should just start with her every single meeting. Councilman Ramos, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Actually, I have two moments of silence, so rather sad news. Moment of silent request for TC Green. Her name was Thomasina Green, very active resident of the Waverly Community who passed recently, and also Jeanette Carpe, another constituent of mine who lived in Tuscany, Canary, who was the founder of the Lily Mae Carroll School, which is in my district. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Are there any other additional regular announcements? Hearing and seeing none, I have a couple announcements. First, I would like to welcome Alice Little and Jamal Keyshawn. They will be joining us as council pages through our longstanding partnership with the My Law Program. They had their program orientation today and dialed into tonight's meeting. Look forward to seeing them and hearing from them both in the near future. So give it up for two young, amazing Baltimore City folks that's going to be helping their Baltimore City Council. Second up, members can find our 2022 regular meeting schedule in the packet of your materials distributed for tonight's meeting. The dates have also been posted in Ledger Star. Again, that's our 2022 regular meetings. Please note those meetings on your schedules so we can have a fully functioning council come 2022. At this point, I'd like to recognize Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, December sixth, 2021, at five P.M. And may we have a moment of silence for Thomasina Green, Jeanette Carpe, and now the two-hundred-and-ninety-five victims of homicide and the one-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-six deaths from COVID. And of course, the continued victims of our opioid epidemic. Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, thank you, Madam Vice President. At this moment, we're going to take a moment of silence. Thank you. There being no new business before the desk, this concludes our twenty-second meeting on the seventy-third term of your Baltimore City Council. Baltimore, we love you.